Mayor, recording has begun.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We are gonna. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock on February 13th. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. Madam Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Winkler.
President.
Councilman Challenger.
President.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
President.
Councilman Jenkins.
President.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. If you all would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, counsel, if you've had a moment to look at the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the February 13th, 2024 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? All, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the 23rd, 23rd of January, as well as the 30th of January. I will entertain a motion to accept those.
Madam Mayor, I do have one minor correction for the minutes. Do the motion first and then discussion? I'm not sure how I'll handle that. It's just a minor typo, that's all.
Okay, if everything else is okay, if it doesn't change the.
No, it does not.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2024, with one minor correction on item 4.4, Planning Department Monthly Report. The words stealing is spelled incorrectly. It should be stealing. That's just a minor typo.
Thank you very much. I have a motion with just a minor correction. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I second this motion.
All right, all, any discussion? All in favor to accept the 23rd of January's minutes with that minor correction, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion for the 30th of January minutes?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the January 30th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wonderful. That brings us to 3.1 of our agenda, which is public comment. If anybody would like to step up and speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated. All right, seeing I have none, we go to our next part of the agenda, which is a wonderful part of the agenda where we are recognizing one of our businesses here in town. So I am going to come down, I'm going to ask counsel to come down here, and I'm going to invite Herb and Dicky and Margaret to come on up here.
Been with the company for 65 years, started when he was about five or six. Number around there, and has worked hard here. And you know, first of all, to have a business to last 100 years is amazing in itself. And secondly, to stay in one place, we really appreciate that. And I will, I wanted to present this to you on behalf of the council where it says, "The Council of the Town of La Plata offers its sincere congratulations to D H Stephens Company in recognition of 100 years of service to the residents and businesses of the town of La Plata and the surrounding areas." And it's presented to you today. Thank you, and congratulations to you. To counsel, if they'd like to say any awards or whatever, we've got to have the picture there.
Any words that you all would like to offer?
I would, Madam Mayor, just.
Okay.
Thank you for the recognition, and I'm biased because I moved, when I moved down to La Plata from Baltimore County in 1986, I took a job with D H Stephens, so I've known Herbey and Margaret and Dicky quite a long time, and of course, their parents. So they have done a lot for La Plata over the years even before I got here. So thank you for everything you've done for me.
I would miss you too.
This is fully on you guys.
You left a good stamp.
Yeah, yeah.
But thank you so much for being a safe little room, and congratulations to you on this momentous occasion. You just did a job.
That's right.
You did a good job. What's that you would like to say? Oh, come to them. They're the best. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'll see you Thursday, right? Hey, steady up, steady up.
Watching my movies.
Chat GPT.
Wow, 100 years. That is so exciting. All right, next on the agenda is matter of council discussion. It's on the Radio Station Road Side Path. It's a memorandum of understanding. And Mr. Manuel, floor is yours.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, we are back on Radio Station Road and Side Path. And with us this evening is Jamie Kendrick from Mead and Hunt, who will walk you through, there should have been an agenda, or I'm sorry, a sort of summary memorandum within your agenda packet, as well as the three agreements. I noticed one had a signature panel that was someone other than me, so we will correct that. And Jamie, if you just want to fill in the blanks as to why some of this is necessitated.
Oh, good evening, friends. Let me add my congratulations, if I can, to D H Stephens. We work closely with them on a number of projects, including this one, and they've been a great service on this radio station project. So can you hear me okay?
We need a little volume from the.
On your side or mine?
Probably on our side.
Okay, so Radio Station Road Side Path has had some developments, mostly good, in the past several months since we last briefed you on the project. Since there is a new council member, let me just maybe quickly give the 30-second tour of the project. If I can remember how to share my screen, here we go. Okay, so this project will create about a 12-mile continuous path between downtown La Plata and Waldorf. If you include what the piece we are talking about, which is on your right, all the way then using St. Charles Parkway up to Leonardtown Road with a couple of offshoots over to 301 off of Billingsley and Smallwood Drive, specifically within, excuse me, the town of La Plata. We connect from the middle school at the bottom end of Willow Lane, turning east on Charles Street, and then north on La Plata Road, and then north on Radio Station Road to Laurel Springs Regional Park, which brings us to, and then just real briefly, these are the three types of facilities you might see on the project. On Willow Lane, a kind of protected bike lane itself, and then elsewhere, a side path that is, that is just what it says. It is typically four to six feet off of the road with that grass buffer, and then there's a couple of places where it will cross over. Radio Road 1 near Audi Lane to move over towards Laurel Springs Park, and then just south of that at Fox Elder to get to the Towns Park. So as of early 2023, we had, we had all this list of issues here to work through. I can tell you that as of the end of 2023, we have resolved all but those highlighted in yellow. And actually, one or two of these should be not highlighted in yellow. The kind of significant outstanding remaining, or the outstanding issue had been up until about two months ago, that you may recall that Charles County had not committed to participating in its portion of the project, basically from the town line up to Radio Station Road. And at a certain point, the town manager and, and to some extent, the council said, "We just need to move on with the project, and if the county ever comes along, the county comes along." So we had, they had not come along until we got to the very final design step, where we were proposing to use kind of a back entrance to Laurel Springs to connect to their path, at which point they objected and said, "Well, why aren't we just going all the way up to Rosemont Road?" And we said, "We are glad that you are eager to participate in the project," and, and here we go. So the bad news is that we are probably delayed by about six months in moving the project forwards towards construction. We thought we would get there sometime towards the end of the summer, probably looking at late winter, early spring of '25. Excuse me. The good news is the town, if all goes well, will no longer have a match for the federal funds that you have received for the project. So the county approached MDOT State Highway and asked to expand the, expand the grant by about plus or minus $380,000. And the town would, excuse me, the county would provide the matching funds. The county will also provide the matching funds to go back. We have to do some additional environmental work, some additional design work for their portion of the project to bring everything back up to where it should be. Interestingly, this, this side path north of Laurel Springs Park, or north of the entrance, I should say, to Laurel Springs Park, had been in the original plans from the early part of 2000s, maybe late 90s, to widen Radio Station Road all the way from 488 up to St. Charles. So we're working off of their plan, but it has triggered a number of environmental, additional environmental reviews, design reviews. So that is what is kind of holding us up. I can tell you again that almost all of the other issues have been resolved. We had to resolve something with the school system around where it would cross at the high school. There has been a new utility installed up Radio Station Road that we've got to do a couple of little workarounds, but I think we're in pretty good shape in that regard. So that's the work we have to do, some more. It's mostly triggered by environmental mitigation. We had remained under our original project, under all the thresholds, excuse me, for wetlands for forest conservation, for stormwater, and then by adding this last plus or minus half mile, it triggered all of those environmental mitigation requirements. So that's what sets us back a little bit. So again, we are aiming to submit all of our plans probably May-June of this year. You have the construction funding secured from MDOT and now the county, and we expect to have an invitation for bids October-November of this year. We are moving ahead with right-of-way acquisition. I actually received the final signed document for one of our seven acquisitions today. I'm very excited about that. That is a process that can be very torturous. There is an issue that we are reworking in front of Family of Care Sage Point, where they have concerns about their existing driveway access and the difficulty of getting up to, getting onto 488 as it is, much less any further potential conflicts with a bike path. So that, I think I'm meeting with them tomorrow or the next day, and that will be resolved, I believe, at that point. So just real quick on the budget, this is where we started, on the far left. We had a small change order that you all approved in late 2022. Moving forward, the county is putting up $189,000 to finish the design work, all the items that I just showed you. So the town has no further, barring something extraordinary that we find, the town has no further design work cost obligations. Whoops. Moving then to construction, when we initially presented the project three years ago, we were looking at a town match of somewhere between $700,000 or $77,000 and about $385,000. Then we got the bikeways match on the tap grant, which brought your obligation down to somewhere around $77,000 to $80,000. Now that the county has put up its share of the match, that basically covers what you would have had been spending from your own budget. So bottom line, we have about a $2.3 million project. 1.8 million of it is federal, 505,000 is non-federal, and the town match on the construction side at this point is likely to be zero or negligible. There may be some residual costs here and there for, you know, a small right-of-way acquisition for an easement or something of the like, but it's, it'd be nominal at best. So there are three agreements that Mr. Manuel or the mayor will need to sign. And not to speak for Mr. Manuel, but I think what we or he is requesting is that, provided that they are, the agreements are largely in the form in which he submitted them to you for this evening's meeting, that he be authorized to go ahead and execute them. The first one is the MDOT bike, and that is because, because of the county change, we are waiting some additional language to add on the county's part. So the first one is the bikeways agreement, which is ready for approval and signature. This provides that 385,000. I'm not sure why it still says it's matched by your 77, but your 77 is basically covered by the county at this point. There is then the federal funds, the S H A Transportation Alternatives Program. Your match will be drawn from the construction and the bikeways funds that the county is putting in. So that's why it says 77 at the top there. Now, there may be a separate construction services agreement that S H A uses for its inspection, materials testing, other residual costs. It may be up to 25,000. We think, again, that can be funded out what the county provides. And then lastly is the funding agreement with the county, which we're still working on with the county attorney. It provides for that 189,000 in design funds. They, because it is their element that kicks us over the mitigation thresholds, the county would pay for all environmental mitigation costs, any utility relocations in that north segment that need to occur, its share of construction management and contract-wide costs. So mobilization, stakeout, inspection, et cetera. And then the two kind of provisions that are probably most of interest to everybody is if the bids come in way high, for example, the county has the right to say, you know, "It's more than we expected, and we're gonna, we're gonna move on." Fine. Then the second one is if the county, excuse me, if the town determines that the county is not performing its obligations in a timely manner, then the county can, excuse me, the town can say, "Thank you very much. We're gonna move on." So those are the three agreements that are in your packet for the evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Jamie, and I love your math. When it's costing us nothing or very little, I mean, that is awesome, and what a great project this is. I'm not too thrilled that it's delayed six months, but you know, that's government, and I understand that. So I will open the floor to counsel for any questions before we look to Mr. Manuel for a direction. I think we're looking for consensus. Is there any questions from counsel?
Yes, Mr. Kendrick, thank you very much. Matt Challenger, Ward 2. Is there a way you can go back, because I don't think I got the slide in the packet, or I couldn't download it? Because this is new, I mean, new information as far as the highlighted versions of the final design, right?
Is this slide?
Yes, yes, this slide. I know, we, when this had come up, gosh, it feels like, I mean, it was years ago, it was years ago when we first started talking about this. We had talked about the potential of extending this to King's Grant. Did that get explored in any way between '21 and now, when we had talked about it? I know the AgroCopia issues were there, remember that. What, if anything, can you tell us about that extension?
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. I will be candid and say, I remember that conversation. I don't remember getting any clear guidance on whether to proceed. That said, if I recall correctly, there is basically a pathway that leads up to Fox Elder from across, across 488, excuse me, across 488. There's a path on that leads up to Fox Elder. Am I right about that?
Right.
Okay, so that's the treatment we were thinking then was to put in a flashing beacon on 488 to provide that, and a crosswalk.
Yeah, so that, yes, so this developed into a later discussion. We were talking about 488 and traffic concerns, because you know, we've got the state highway put the second traffic light on 488 between AgroCopia and King's Grant. But we talked about this being an opportunity, maybe that we could leverage, because there's going to be increased bike traffic in the area to potentially lobby the state for some additional safety measures where you're speaking at Fox Elder and the entranceway. Is that, is that something we can continue to explore if we haven't done that? And what kind of guidance do you need?
I can speak a little bit to that. You know, we had talked about, obviously, the conversation you just alluded to, but at the same time, we had sort of talked about a second phase that would more tie in King's Grant, but also taking it, get my directions correct, east to Councilman Jenkins' neighborhood, Park Run. So that would be like the, maybe the Phase 2 portion of the project. Of course, the right-of-way is a lot wider as you go east on Route 6, so there may be less limitations, but also taking into consideration trying to make that connection to King's Grant at the same time as a second phase. And then potentially third phase Port Tobacco Road out to, there may be part of the second phase heading west.
I mean, in any event, I don't know that it's ever too early to advocate for safety measures. And if we're increasing the incentive, right, for this great, amazing bike path that we've got underway that isn't going to cost us much at all, if anything, why don't, I mean, maybe we can use those resources to show increased bike traffic may facilitate more, a second look, right, compared to what's been done in the past.
Yeah, because we did have state highway evaluate, obviously, flashing beacon, or and they came back that it did not meet the warrants, but at the same time, if we incorporate it as part of a major facility upgrade, we may get further consideration, if you will.
And of course, that was prior to our traffic light.
As I say, and the impacts of that traffic signal and backing up traffic.
Right.
Right. And then continued sight distance issues with someone trying to cross that path due to sort of.
Councilman, I know it's here. I'm just having a hard time finding it. Further east? I mean, west?
It's right at the entrance to King's Grant, just.
Yeah, almost.
Is it this?
A little bit further.
No, it's, yeah, it's a little bit up the road.
By the sign?
It is by the sign, yes. It's very close to the sign.
Jamie, right there. That's the problem, right?
So that is, and I know that we have petitioned the state on several occasions to even put in a, you know, markings, crosswalk on there. Usually, that's a calming, traffic calming measure there. They have denied that. We even asked to put a mirror up there so we can see the traffic turning into King's Grant, because there have been several near, I mean, really bad accidents there. I don't know if there's been any fatalities, but very bad accidents there. And the state was not willing to do anything with that. And, and I know I frequent that, frequently go across that way to Tillman Lake. And it is, at times, you do take your, your life into your own hands. You've got to be aware of all the traffic coming in, but that's, yep, that's it right there.
So if I can suggest, if it's okay with Mr. Manuel, why, why don't we take another run of the conversation with S H A on this? Maybe there's a different treatment they could live with. I don't know what that would be off the top of my head. Would that be okay?
And look, this could be a Phase 1, Phase 2 situation as well, right? So this is kind of a preliminary discussion in light of, right, the second traffic light, in light of increased bike usage in the area, et cetera. You know, we don't have to go for the full, you know, I don't know that they're going to put a crosswalk in without any other device or instrumentation ahead of it, but let's, let's see if we can take another go at it, because I know the mayor has worked on it before. Now they seem a little bit more open to it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think there is a change of approach at S H A that would, you know, theoretically be more amenable. If someone can track down the various documentations from before, that might make my job a little easier.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then lastly, if you could just send us, I'm sure Ms. Phipps can send it to us, but if you could send us a copy of this presentation, that's it. But thank you so much. It's great work, Jamie.
Thank you.
Any other counsel comments?
A quick question. Is there any, and this obviously may have been already discussed in previous, prior to my joining the council, is there any risk for us not having any skin in the game? Meaning of us pulling our match back and somebody saying, "Well, this is no longer your project."
No, I mean, I think that part of the history in getting the bikeways funding was that the county put up, excuse me, the town put up plus or minus $50,000 a few years ago to do the initial feasibility study that kind of kicked this all off, and that was recognized and appreciated by the state. And once Mr. Manuel is authorized to sign that, those agreements, that money's locked in. Those are the, more or less, the agreements that are ready to go from the state. So I don't, I don't see that as a risk at all. I think the big, the biggest risk here is that the county doesn't follow through, but I don't have any reason to believe that they will not follow through.
Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Again, I would just underscore the previous comments and support. That's a great project, and the crossing at the King's Grant entrance, I have used that on my bike many, many, many times. And I have a, frankly, a personal stake, because a couple of times, even on a Sunday morning, there are folks flying through there, and I don't cross on my bike. I get off my bike and I walk across, but my point is, I think, so I would certainly urge us, if we could pursue the state, and I will make one negative comment that really, to me, is, I don't quite get it, but anyway, when they say previous comments have been, "Well, that place doesn't meet the warrants", that means, that tells me that somebody has to get hurt before they do anything. And I know I can't change that tonight, but that, to me, is just the wrong thing to do. And oh, by the way, the state highway administration has a, they're part of a, they signed a policy document in 2013 on zero deaths. That's their policy. And so here we are, we have a need, and again, some minimal, and I think, Mayor James, you said it correctly, traffic calming, even striping would do that. So I would urge us to do that, and I appreciate, Jamie, all your work on this. I know it hasn't been easy. So thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Jamie, for all the work that you do on behalf of the town. I would just like to suggest that we check the numbers in the agreement between the government and the town of La Plata. In one area, we were saying 1.2 million. It is 1.824 million, but it's all saying 1.83 million on the agreement with the county. So we can just check the map.
I believe, I believe the tap grant that you have does not reflect the revised amount based on the county match. amount based on the county match. The bikeways folks are very nimble in getting their agreements back to us. So that one should be the right amount. The TAP is, should be awaiting the the adjustment on the, on their additional, whatever it is.
If we could just check the, the numbers and make sure that they're accurate in the agreement with the town, I mean, the county, that'd be great.
Can I?
So, uh.
Madam Mayor, could I just, so lastly, um, Mr. Kendrick, Mr. Manuel, I think also, I think Councilman Jenkins, um, just his comments sparked a thought up here. Obviously, we're trying to make downtown corridor more walkable, friendly, more bikeable. We want to encourage residents throughout the town to bike into town to shop, work and play. That's what we're trying to do. So this is, that's another hopefully connection point with the state trying to, to help us in the downtown area. So maybe that's something we can cite as well, the continued work they're doing uh, downtown. Thanks.
All right. So Mr. Manuel, if I am correct in this, we are looking for consensus from the council for you to enter into the M O U and the agreement?
Yeah, there are three total agreements.
Okay, can I do it all at once, or do we have to do it individually?
I, I think all at once.
Okay, so I am looking for a consensus from um, the council for to authorize our town manager to enter into all three agreements. If you um, agree, please let me know. Uh, Councilman Winkler.
Yes.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I agree as well. Thank, thank you so much, Jamie. Appreciate all your hard work.
No problem, thank you all.
That's done. So keep it up. You're doing a fantastic job for us.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much. Good night.
Good night. All right. Next on the agenda is uh, 4.2 is the Blue Jay Court Stormwater Pipeline Repair Recommendation. Director Stahl?
Sorry. Uh, that runs parallel to Oriole Lane and goes under Blue Jay Court. And actually runs very, very close to the house that is just west of Blue Jay Court. It is, the, the pipe is approximately 10 feet off of their garage. But it's about 35 feet in the ground. So it is a very, very difficult pipe to repair. We've explored a number of options that you saw before you. Um, our goal in this and our recommendation was to hire Hardy Underground to come in with a directional drill. To use a big borehead and to go right down through the existing pipe. And then be able to pull an H D P E pipe, a high-density polyethylene pipe, back through the existing stormwater pipe. We have gotten a number of different quotes uh, from Bryce Austin. And that would utilize pipe that we purchased. And so you could see that the purchase of the pipe in and of itself is about $22,000. And then the cost from Mr. Austin was another $12,000. So there, it was a little bit higher than the quote we received from Hardy Underground to actually pull the pipe through. And he would provide that pipe. Our recommendation in this case was to go ahead and use Hardy Underground and have them pull a pipe through there. And we would ask for your approval because this is one that's only getting worse with time. So we did try and look at it to repair it ourselves. But in all honesty, we feel that it's just a little bit beyond what we can do with our equipment. It, it's very, very deep. And so we, we just worry about being able to pull everything through there and what happens if we run into a challenge.
Thank you very much. Thank you for getting the three quotes and the background information and the recommendation. Has this been looked at by the treasurer and is funding available for this?
I think the answer is yes. I mean, this is not a, this is a project that honestly has to be done. I mean, this isn't one where uh, this, this is one that is uh, clearly a you know, something that we have to do.
No, I appreciate that. Um, I will, I, I have no problem with this whatsoever, especially since there is a urgency about this. But I will open the floor up for any uh, questions from council.
So Director Stahl, your memo says you'll be happy to answer questions on February 20th. Are you answering questions tonight or do we have to hold?
We were originally told the 20th, but we moved it up just to try and facilitate things along. So I apologize for that.
So just, um, typically I ask the same question that, that there's a huge difference between Pleasant Construction, Hardy and Austin Dirtports. Is it because of where Pleasant Construction is located?
Yes, Pleasant Construction, as you may be aware, is way up off of 270. Um, but they do a lining where they actually pull a liner down through it. So there, there was a little bit different process there. We've tried to use them on a couple of different projects. It, it would be very useful if they could price it accordingly. The problem is they haven't been competitive in their pricing. They've always been considerably more, so we try and do what is best for the town in this situation.
Right, I just wanted to understand that there's a huge variance between them. And
There is.
In the past, you told me that it was because of where the company was located.
Well, that's some of it, but also um, I think they're very worried. All of us are worried about, you know, to be honest, you're trying to make it work. I mean, it's one thing to say, oh yeah, we're going to pull it through there. It's another thing to actually be able to pull it through there and to figure the problem out. One of the things that we've discussed with Mr. Hardy is if he can't pull it through the existing pipe, he will actually directionally drill another uh, line beside the existing pipe and put the new pipe in beside. Our preference would be to run through the existing pipe. But if we can't, then what we would do is then backfill the old pipe with flowable fill as best we can. Part of the challenge with this pipe is it has so rotted out. It's a 24-inch pipe. But it, about a third of it is completely gone in the bottom. And so it is, it is going to be a challenge because some areas on, in the pipe, we can't even get a camera through there because there's nothing in the bottom. And we've all been afraid to uh, you know, put a camera down because it would get stuck. So it's, it's been a challenge.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to come back next week and answer questions as well.
We'll have a lot more too. A quick question for you with uh, if um, Hardy goes in there and they realize they have to do something else, will there be a price change?
No, that's the, that's been the good thing is that he said, we'll just pull out and we'll directional drill beside it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Any other questions from council? So I am looking for a consensus to move this to legislation. Um, Councilman Winkler?
Of course.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to 4.3, land purchase. Mr. Manuel, it's all yours.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, uh, this is uh, the property purchase along South Crane Highway, more specifically at, uh, I think I've got the address 9495 Montero Place. Uh, and this would be for future public facilities.
And you are looking for?
Authorization to consummate the purchase.
So we would uh, bring this to leg, if there's a consent for this, uh, okay. All right, I will look for a consensus to move this forward to legislation for authorization for the town manager to enter into an agreement to purchase property. Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I, I mean, this is just based on the prior discussion of, and that's why we're not putting in, in here. All right, yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I agree to, which is bring it to legislation. Thank you very much. In revision of the town council rules, uh, uh, procedures director. You might want to have a seat. Thank you very much. Um, floor is yours.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, uh, you have before you a memo that was not attached to the agenda. My apologies for that. I did not get that uh, on in time. But mainly it's a summary of the changes that I have proposed in the um, rules of procedure as I've received uh, feedback from the town council and done a little bit of uh, reviewing myself to clarify some things. Uh, so the items in the rules of procedure that are highlighted in yellow are just so you can, therefore easier visibility. Starting from the revision date, which seems like a very easy one. The next one is uh, section 2.1, uh, removing third from the second, third and fourth Tuesday. The calendar that was adopted by the town council will not be every second, third and fourth Tuesday. The third Tuesdays will only be in the top half of the calendar before June. In section 2.4, and this one I think probably will warrant some discussion is the appointment of mayor pro tem. The current rules of procedures do not describe how the mayor pro tem is elected. I know there is a practice in place, um, but you may want to define that as well as the terms for the mayor pro tem. And that would also extend to section 3.1 where the mayor pro tem is mentioned again. Uh, in town code, the, the mayor pro tem position is described as the presiding officer or the uh, temporary presiding officer. I'm not in, trying to say that either of these is correct or you should take either one of them. I'm just pointing that out. Would you like to discuss these as we go along or?
Whatever's easier for you. Uh, if it is um, easier to, I, I think that we should um, do line by line, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Um, all right, we'll go back. Does anybody have uh, any questions on the date being revised? All right, or removing the third uh, Tuesday of the month? Okay. Um, and section 2.4, uh, the appointment of mayor pro tem. Any discussion on that? Any questions on that? All right.
Well, yes, so Director Phipps, you noted we do have a process. Um, it's not in the, it's not in our policies and procedures. Are, when you looked at changes, did you, or are you aware of other municipalities, how they do the mayor pro tem position? I know some it's like, it's, it's kind of a condition of the election, or some are appointed for a period of time by vote, by the council.
It does vary by municipality. There doesn't seem to be any consistent practice on that. It could be a year, it could be the pro tem for the entire term. It could be a pro tem for just the next meeting. That's just something you would have to decide as a body.
It didn't, it didn't sound like you had a recommendation to define it. You just noted that there was no procedure within it, right?
I think um, for the next council, who, however that is formed, uh, it would be good to define it. So that there's no question about how long anyone is sitting on the term, how the turns are taken, if that's how they choose to take, to proceed with that. I think predictability is just generally key in consistency.
Um, the way it's been working for years is that it is appointed, it used to go by wards, but it's appointed by um, the council. So right now it's Councilman Challenger and it's for a year. And then in May, it will um, be for whomever again, so.
Would you assume, or would you say, since I'm the new person here, has it worked? Do you have more experience with it? Has it been working in that way in the past?
I think it's very, I, I think it's worked uh, for the last almost seven years.
Firm believer, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, I just don't think it's ever been defined. And I think that it was just passed down from council to council and um,
Yeah, I think, I think defining it is probably smart for future. But, but if the process is to have an annual, to have it appointed as a, as a annual or once a year or for however it's been done, I think that, you know, if that has worked in the past, there's no reason to assume it won't work in the future unless somebody has a, a different, like another municipality that here, there, they're doing it this way and this seems to be working a whole lot better. You know?
Yeah, I would just say from my experience, typically councils will have an organizational meeting shortly after the new fiscal year. Of course, you can have it when you want to. And we do not have a strictly a committee structure like some uh, communities do, but at that time, the mayor would announce the committee assignments as well as the mayor uh, pro tem or the mayor pro tem could be elected from the general body. So there are all different ways. And as Kelly pointed out, there's really no right or wrong way. It's just the way that our code sort of defines and uh, memorializing that in our rules of procedure would probably be a, a good idea so that people could follow along and understand what the process is.
So I thought that in either the charter or the code, it states that the council will elect a pro tem, but the mayor, since we've been here, has appointed it and we approved or no. And so I think it should, we should go back to that document and see what it says and make sure that we are aligned with that document. I don't, you know, I don't think that we should be operating outside of the charter or the uh, the code. Unless there's something wrong with that. And if it's something wrong with it, we need to fix it. But if we're not going to fix it, then we need to align as closely as possible with that.
Yeah, in, in fact, Councilwoman, in section 3.1, the uh, change I proposed there was a majority of quorum of the members of the town council present shall appoint one of their number. So you, you would like to go back to that. And also, um, while we were at it, did we want to change mayor pro tem in the rules of procedure to reflect the language in the, of the title in the code?
That's alignment, you know, unless we want to change our code, then if we're not going to change our code, then we need to align ourselves with the code.
And Councilman Winkler, so far, you know, basically every council person has taken a turn for a year to serve in the mayor's absence. And I mean, she's unavailable, so Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I have done it this year. I don't think Councilman Jenkins has yet, but um, it so far has worked as far as an alternating way has worked fine.
So at this point, can I take a consensus to, um, since you've have it written one way, um, to reflect, to see if there's a consensus to reflect the language that is in the charter? Is that the appropriate? Um, okay, I will take that. To have this reworded, um, to reflect the charter? Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Challenger?
Uh, yes, just to be sure I'm clear, that's what is reflected in 3.1 that you were showing us, uh, Director Phipps.
Uh, the members of the town council present shall appoint one of their number as temporary presiding officer and shall inform the town man, well, I'm sorry, and shall inform the town manager of the appointment was uh, another addition. Sorry, that is not in the code. Um, so the members of the town council present shall appoint one of their number as temporary presiding officer, which is how it reads in the code.
Okay, yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilwoman.
I agree with that.
Okay.
May I ask, will there be a term assigned to that?
That's a good question.
Um, yeah, that is, that's a interesting um, question. And it doesn't reflect that in the charter. But I think every council is different. And maybe during that organizational term, the council decides that, maybe that is the flexibility. That's what I would suggest, um, unless someone else has. Some council members may not want to serve as mayor pro tem or presiding officer, as the language says. Uh, and some if we pigeonhole them into just a term, that means if someone uh, wants to serve longer and it is the will of the council, then we're kind of, we can't do that. So I would suggest that we do not put uh, a term there. For councils that uh, come after us, they may want to define that. If that's okay with, uh, I will entertain any other motion, I mean, any other suggestions on this, but I would say I'm not in favor of. I'm not in favor of putting a term on that, because every council is different. Councilman Winkler?
Yeah, I, I think that you can leave it up to each individual. You know, appointment of mayor pro tem for X amount of time, whether it's a year or whether it's six months or until that point where somebody says, I no longer want to do it. So I think leaving it ambiguous kind of gives us that flexibility.
Thank you, Councilman Challenger.
I I'm torn on this, because I, I don't think there's anything that would preclude someone from being voted again, or being rejected again.
There was.
Right, is there, is there?
There, there's history with that.
Well, if, if it is determined by council, right? So they could be voted against to service prior, mayor pro tem beyond the, the term limit. But I guess, I don't, I'm not aware of the history, so maybe I'm, I'm not looking at it with the same awareness of a danger. Wouldn't make, so I don't, I don't know, I guess I'm indifferent on it, I like definitions, I like terms. That's where I, where I lean, but I'm open to be persuaded.
Okay, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I'm not in favor of adding it because there's clear language about the presiding officer in the code, and since it does not define it, I don't think we should. I think it could be something that each council decides.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins?
I'm like Councilman Challenger, I'm a little, I guess, torn, because I, I too like, I think for transparency and for consistency, not only for the council, but the public, that they understand who the person is on, and it could be an annual basis for a year. So I'm kind of leaning toward that process as well.
All right, and I am going to go that for not defining. So since there's a maturity that says that, we'll keep it as is and allow the councils in the future to decide.
And if I could just skip ahead in this year, when you're gone next month, Madam Mayor, we should expect a a vote from the council, probably on the 27th to appoint pro tem, or a presiding officer.
It would not.
Temporary presiding officer.
Yes, and right now, Councilman Challenger is it.
Oh, okay.
Until, because the way that we've been doing it until May, unless it goes against what we're, we've been doing, he has it until May.
Okay.
You guys can vote me out, that's fine.
We'll wait till you're not here. All right, so that takes care of two, four and three, one.
Moving on to four, two, this was revised in response to feedback from Councilman Jenkins regarding the agenda item request process. I tried to figure out a simpler way to say this, but I was unsuccessful. I did look at some other municipalities as far as how they request items to be included on the agenda, and some of them were much longer than our process, and some of them, many of them had no process in place. One I did look at that might appeal to the council is when we're a sponsorship, a joint sponsorship was set up ahead of time. So there was a request form, but there were already multiple sponsors for the item. So there was some coordination ahead of time, and it didn't need to be done right here on the spot at a council meeting.
So when you say sponsorship, it means that speaking with other council members, there's an agenda item, so two other council members had said, yeah, this is, I'm in favor of this.
Correct.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so does it not, I thought that it was addressed in the code as well, and it said that any agenda items would be presented to the town manager for consideration to be brought through.
I would have to go back and look at the code on that one.
And, and that is how it works now, is that the agenda items go to the town manager. And if it's something that the town manager has not addressed, or feels it is in the best interest of council, if I'm, if I'm correct on this, then it's brought to the floor. And council votes on whether or not this proceeds. Some of the things I think that the town manager works on, that's not staff and, that doesn't need a lot of staff research on, and it goes straight to him, but it doesn't, doesn't come to the agenda meeting for approval or rejection.
Our current practice, we bring all councils, we'll say currently sponsored. So if one individual council member has a request that they would like to be placed on the agenda, we bring that to council for consideration.
At the first meeting of the month.
At the first meeting of the month. And then if there is a majority of council that wishes to have this placed on an agenda, then that item is placed on an agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
And that.
Yeah, I'm out of the, you know, I'm not the agenda lord, so to speak, where I get to decide what goes. It's sort of a, it's a process and we want council, but it was Director Phipps has identified, if it's cosponsored, then, you know, the idea is that there's, there is the will of council to have this placed on an agenda. So that hurdle would be cleared and would not have to come to council for consideration, and then it would be placed on a future agenda.
That's new.
So that's what she just proposed.
That is new, that was just a proposal, suggestion.
Right, so Councilman Jenkins has submitted several, and Councilman Jenkins, correct me if I'm wrong, several requests. And I know that they have brought, I don't know if all of them, because I, I don't see them, if all of them have been brought to us. But from what I've heard from him, that they have not been brought forward to be put on the agenda at the first of the month. Because the town manager is working certain.
Yeah, I believe they cleared the hurdle of council, which is, they were brought to council, council decided whether or not they have not, Councilman Jenkins.
Well, unless I'm mistaken, I submitted, I submitted eight, three or four of them have been acted upon by the council. Two of them were presented, one was rejected, and that's fine, but I got at least, pardon me, the council made, had a consensus that this one particular island should not move forward, and that's okay. Yeah, it was, but there's at least four others where.
Well, that may be an error on my part, so I will go back and investigate.
I'm only, I'm not trying to point fingers or disperse, I'm just trying to.
No, I'm not taking.
Trying to relay that, for me, this doesn't work, and it's not in the rules of procedure. I, I do like the language you proposed, but if it's in the language, then from my perspective, then it needs to be come up to the council for a yea or nay vote, because there's four of them out there, there's been, I haven't heard anything for almost a year.
Well, some that have been approved, and we've just not brought them back to council, and we're working on the RFP for the.
No, okay, well, I have a specific list that we can review.
Yeah, we can, we can meet separately.
I'm just saying that if we're gonna, if we're gonna put it in any rules of procedure, then let's try to be consistent and use it, that's all.
All right, any other discussion on this?
So does that mean we still have to use this, this agenda request form or not? I'm, I'm not clear on that yet, if this language is adopted by the council.
I, I would suggest maybe simplifying that form a little bit, it is quite extensive, it's a three-page form.
Agreed, agreed, I, I agree with that.
Okay, then I could.
I, I mean, what, why do we need a form? I mean, the form, it's a permission slip to conduct business that we've been elected to do by bringing things to council for discussion topic, and some of the items on the form, there's no way we would even know what staff time might be used for that, that's, that's not something that council could answer, that may be something that Mr. Manuel could answer when it's being discussed. As far as should we move forward with it, we've had a couple of those where it's come up, where you've told us as council, look, this is just going to be a massive amount of time spent by staff, and we've said, all right, well then, let's not do that, that's a waste of time. But that's not in our purview, that's, that's not, those types of things on the, the slip.
Is there a way to streamline this as far as maybe it's a conversation that a council member or, you know, any of us have with the town manager saying, hey, we're looking at putting whatever, you know, the agenda request there. Does it need to be, and I, I respect what Councilman Challenger is saying is, it sounds like a permission slip, I, I got you, but it's also a way to make sure that staff, I guess, is not inundated, it's, it's a fine line to try to find out what's important to all of us, because we represent four different wards and the entire town. Is it more, should the first step be to talk with the town manager saying, hey, here's my concern about whatever it is, before a form is submitted? Because the town manager may be able to say, hey, this is, we're handling this. And then it's not a form that has been filled out, so you feel like it's not being addressed? I mean, I'm just.
Well, but, and, and, and I don't disagree with that, but I'll give you a specific example. Twice before the form, for some reason appeared, I, I just wrote a brief memorandum directed to the town manager, and I think I copied, I can't remember now, and I made a, I made a request for have a discussion item. And I provided what I thought was the background material, i.e. what's in the comp plan? And why we should be, maybe talk about it. And, and it was a two-page memorandum from me. And that came before, and so we ended up, actually what it was, it was a presentation by Smart Growth America about complete streets.
And we did.
No, we did that, but, but I'm trying to make a point that it was simply a memorandum from me directed to the town manager, and I believe I carbon copied the council, and it was a two-pager. What, what the topic was, why I believe we should talk about it, based upon the comp plan and, and the, and the person or the organization that would be presenting. And I've reached out to them all, I have a problem, and that's all it was. And then, and then all of a sudden, a year or so later, we had this four-page form.
And you know, and maybe the form came about because of, and I can't speak to that, but because of your memo to make it so it's, I guess, more uniform for everyone, because I remember that memo and you did a good job writing that. Council, what do you think is the best way to get your wishes in front of council? Is it going to the town manager first to see if it's already been being addressed? Is it? Do we add something on our meeting agenda that says council requests? You know, that we say, hey, we've got this, this and this coming up? I, I'm not sure, go ahead.
I would assume if somebody's making a request to the council, that they have perhaps done some due diligence and reached out to parties involved, be it the town manager, be it the the director stall or director Phipps or whatever, to learn about some background, but I, I, I can't wrap my head around the fact that as a council person, I would expect my fellow council members to have issues to bring before that I'm unaware of in my ward. To say, I got an issue that I need to bring before the council, what's the harm in saying, I need five minutes next week? We can sit down and decide whether or not we need to spend five minutes, or whether we need to spend 50 minutes, that's a discussion later. But to bring the idea, to bring a thought to the council, no harm to foul, I mean.
I see what you're coming from.
You know, and we don't, to, to fill out paperwork, and I mean, like, we've already wasted 25 minutes talking about how we're going to fill out a paper, and we're back to square one. I mean, let's, let's get, let's get a move on with, with, with how things progress.
And I think the only concern is how much staff time it will take if there's something.
It's a conversation, there is no staff time. If it requires staff time, you've already had a, an issue that's, that, a discussion with the respective directors or the town manager to say, you know, we, this is a serious issue, we need to bring this on, that's a, that's an entirely different.
I think I spoke to that maybe the last meeting, that you know, we've become very regimented, and we've moved away from our work sessions where there maybe is an opportunity to have these discussions.
Therein, I brought that up in my second meeting, that the fact that we do not sit down and have a work session, I think is a complete travesty as a, as an organization.
I think in the future, that's the direction we're moving, to have, bring work sessions back, they've taken on a second life. So I think that would be the opportunity and maybe clear up some of the sort of issues we're having to get, have an open discussion about things.
So do you think that it would be prudent to update our agenda to, our meeting agenda to include an area that says council requests or council updates or council concerns, something that is a line item that at that point, Councilman Winkler can say, hey, I'm kind of concerned about whatever, is this something that we can put on our agenda in the future, or?
Well, I think it's communication, you know, if, it's not like Councilman Winkler is going to have something that comes up the night of, it's very well could, but yeah, I think he's going to have something that he's given some thought to, and we can have a conversation, and so, because one thing is, it's good to have the conversation so that if I have a staff person who needs to be involved in the conversation, that they have a heads up. Having been a department head before being a manager, the most uncomfortable time is when I'm standing at that podium and somebody's popping questions at me left and right, and I'm expected to recall instantaneously anything and everything. So I think it's a matter of the work being done before the meeting as opposed to, you know, hey, I've got an idea, let's massage that idea and sort of work through some of the things. And then we can have a discussion about it collectively as a council at that time.
So what I'm hearing, sorry, Director Phipps, so what I'm hearing from the council, and please, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the form, maybe not so much, going to the town manager and saying, hey, this is something that is a concern of mine, making sure that he has the proper people that are informed about that. And then council bringing it, or council member bringing it to council saying, I've done my due diligence, or whatever the words are that you're going to use, that this is a concern of mine, and I would like to bring this to council. Is that kind of what, to summarize, is that what we have come to on this, instead of filling out forms, town manager then coming to council? Work session? Is that? Have I summarized it properly?
I think you got the form being out correctly, I'd say that, I, I agree with that. Again, to echo Councilman Winkler, I don't think we should have additional gatekeepers for town council person to add something to the agenda as an item of discussion. And maybe I'm seeing it a little bit differently as far as a full-fledged report from a director in a department. That's different, and I can understand your concern about, well, why don't we collaborate with this? And I think Mr. Manuel spoke to that. At our work session, Councilman Jenkins could bring something which might spark an idea from Councilwoman Bryant Ward, with something that she's dealing with in steeplechaser in her ward, or in all of the people she talks to. Then we can come up with a plan for another session or a report. That's why it's on the first meeting of the month, right? That's, that's why it's not every single meeting is what I'm, I'm pulling from this. So I, I don't think we need to add additional layers. I'm gonna, I'm gonna interpret it as Director Phipps has reworded it to mean how it was first given to us, that council person can bring it. We can agree to go forward with it or not at the meeting or prior to. But I don't think we should have additional gatekeepers, Madam Mayor, as far as whether or not we want to allow for staff time, et cetera, for ideas or thoughts on future action items.
Fair enough.
I did have an idea about a very simple way to add it to the agenda, is we don't have a new business section? And that might be a time to introduce a new idea and discuss it.
And that could be at any.
At any meeting, and the new business is already included as items that may appear on the agenda, we just don't at the moment.
I think that's a, a really simple and, and a good idea with that, because then if we do decide collectively that we're going back to the work sessions, at least a work session, the first, if we call it the first Tuesday, or the second Tuesday of the month, if we've introduced it at the fourth Tuesday of the prior month, we know that we're going to have a work session on whatever the concern is that was just brought up in new business. And, and that might be, that's a, a very good idea. Are you okay with that, Council, okay, Councilman Challenger?
That's fine.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
So. I am just apprehensive about going through this whole thing. Because we were going to have a meeting with the town attorney. If we're going to go through and put these things in place and they're only going to be enforceable for the council members and not the mayor, I, I couldn't care less. We have got to make sure that we are all following the same rules and abiding by the same standards. The council members, they don't, we don't, we're not here every day. We don't have access to staff like the mayor does. And so things are, she's able to get things done and have conversations. We're not able to do that. I had to make a meeting, schedule a meeting with the town manager every Friday just to have conversations to get things discussed. So if these rules are not enforceable, the policy is not enforceable, I couldn't care less what's in it because it doesn't mean anything. And so we need to figure out, have that meeting with the town attorney to see how these things can be enforced. So whatever you want to put in, it doesn't matter. It is, it's not enforceable. Nobody, nobody's holding everybody to the same standards.
Okay, I can understand that. And that is, I guess, the meeting that we're having next week. However, if we don't have anything in place to have a meeting for next week, and I guess that is just kind of a waste of time.
We've had these in place. They have not been enforceable, they have not been adhered to by everybody on the council. So. We can have them when we have them, but if we've identified a way to make sure that everybody is held to the same standard and the same policies and procedures, then we can talk about policies and procedures. Until then, you're right, it doesn't matter.
No, I do believe that it does matter, but, okay, so.
I just had, I got an observation again, and I appreciate the discussion. And that, to me, is the point. We have some very bright, engaged people, us on the council. And for me, speaking for me, I found high value when we talk about complicated, immediate and midterm and long-term issues that we're facing. And we don't, from my perspective, we don't talk about it enough. And I'm not suggesting we just meet because we want to sit here and BS and talk. I'm saying we have significant issues that's biting us and will bite us in the future. And so we have folks here that are engaged and they know the community and we're hearing from residents. So we should be able to come here, as Councilman Winkler just said, and talk about that. And at some future date, and again, not to overburden the staff, and I, and I empathize because I used to do that, so I get it. But that then gives them a time to research or to brief us or whatever, to educate us, because I don't know everything. But for me, again, collaboration and discussion pays immediate and long-term benefits. And so I, I would continue to hark on that, and that's why I know, maybe I voted for it, I can't remember. So now we're going to go to one last meeting a month. I just still have a heartburn with that, but that's a done deal, okay? All I'm saying is that I would highly encourage us to have collaborative work sessions so we can hash out and talk about and have ideas from different people. That's important.
And I think that's the, the way, I've heard Councilman Winkler saying that. And I think that is what has been decided here, or at least the consensus here going with back to the work session on the first of each, or the first meeting of each month, which is the second Tuesday of the month. And I think by going through the, that we have looked at the rules of procedures and we are fine tuning it. We do need this document, I believe, to have as a foundation of how we govern and rules and procedures. I understand Councilwoman Bryant Ward saying that, well, some people feel that they may be above the rules. I disagree with that, but if we don't have a document here that we all agree on and move forward with that, then we're all human, you know, there are mistakes that can be made. And I think we learn from those and we move forward. So with the agenda, adding the items to the agenda, it's been very muddled on that. It sounds as if we are looking at perhaps, well, I will get a consensus, whether it goes under new business at one of the meetings and then have it scheduled for a work session.
Director Phipps, is it possible the only time the council members get to actually speak is when they're giving commission reports? Can it be changed from commission reports to council member updates to include commission reports on their new business? It just simply, we only get to say what we did at a commission. And so instead of just the commission reports, council member updates and commission reports?
So in that section, would it be, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me. It's not called new business, correct?
It is. Section six is new business. And then six point one is commission reports, and then six point two is upcoming events, Mayor James.
The council can change it to however you feel works for you. Under, I, I would only suggest a, something broader to bring up those new items that you, the new topics that you want to bring up.
Yeah, I mean, if I can speak to, you know, things come into my brain, I've been doing this too long. One of the communities I've worked at and represented in the past, you know, we had a work session where we identified work session topics. And then the council prioritized them. And then, for example, work sessions start at six, business meeting starts at seven. So you had to work, so you didn't have to come out any more nights, but you had a discussion at six o'clock to seven o'clock. You know, we may have wanted to cover three topics, depending on the amount of conversation, we maybe only got to two. Well, that starts at the top of the queue at the next meeting. That may be something to consider, because what I'm hearing is the council does not have an opportunity to sort of voice concerns or bring items to the table that they believe we need to have a discussion or need to be addressed. So that may be one solution to that.
So would one of the new business items then be mayor and council reports?
I'm in favor of that. Instead of just saying commission reports, because that does only give the opportunity for council to say yes or no, we'd have a report instead of any updates or anything else that would be on their mind. So instead of commission reports, council member reports? And that's where they can do that?
That's fine.
Update? Good, okay. So we'll change from commission reports under new business to council reports? Or council?
Okay.
Yeah.
And will that include your reports as well, or is upcoming events still going to be separate?
You know, no, let's just put it under council. So it doesn't, I do not need to have a separate line item for upcoming events that could be part of my council report.
Okay, and then will we have this new agenda item, topics for discussion?
Under new business?
Under new business? That that opportunity for council members to bring up the topics they wanted to discuss or no?
Mr. Manuel, do you think that it should be there? Or how do you think that should go under new business?
I think if, you know, I presented one example of how one community did it. If you're not going to consider that, then probably new business is the best way to go.
Okay, so we'll add it under, if, if it is the will of the council, put it under new business? We can always try it, right? If it doesn't work, we can all have a consensus to move forward on something else.
Other topics for discussion? How, how would you like to head this?
No, but.
No, that, there were council reports and then if you wanted to bring something up.
So simply council member updates, and if they have a, something they want to bring forward, they can mention it at that time.
So new business and then council member updates, not reports?
I think it's just ward smithing. Well, I think we all have the same idea that at that time, we can bring up something that we would like to see in the future or our commission reports. So whatever that word is, we could just say council, council talks. But whatever that is, council report and updates, and we could.
I want to say this is how county got to council moments or council comments or something.
Oh, they do council comments.
Something like that.
But if we do reports and updates, I think that would cover it because we can say, no commission reports, but I do have an update, ward, whatever, we have this concern. I think that covers it both if you say reports and updates or updates and reports. It does not matter the, the language on that one. Is that?
Okay, council reports and updates, that covers everything.
So going back to four point two, that's going to have to change a little bit. Do you agree with that?
Okay.
And maybe we revisit this? On, because we've spent a lot of time on adding items to the agenda. And I think we just discussed, and there was a consensus here, how we should move forward with that. And I don't think it reflects what is written down.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to have to watch the tape, so.
I think that it is now, the way we add something to the agenda is going to be through perhaps our council updates and reports. So it's not going to be a written form.
Okay.
And therefore it would. Need to be changed a little bit?
Okay.
If that is the will of the council, is, are we good with that? All right, so we are going to move on and not approve the language that is written here until it is rewritten. All right, five point one.
Actually, there was one last part in four point two. That was another response to Councilman Jenkins' question regarding town halls by individual town council members. That also has not been defined. I, I don't know if you want to define that.
That was this.
I do think we probably should wait until we get, have a discussion on what a town hall is. I mean, I think we'd have to define what a town hall is versus a symposium or a forum. Because from my research, a town hall, using a town hall is a kind of a Q and A with people, whereas a forum or a symposium is something else. And I think that town halls should be, each ward should be able to hold a town hall. I mean, to discuss items with their residents. A symposium or a forum may be something else. So if we are referral to town halls hosted by requesting council members, I think a town hall is, is, should be available to anybody that, any council member that.
That's the clarification I was asking.
My question is, it already is available, so why are we writing it in when we don't need to here? I mean, there's that, there's no preclusion of us doing it. So I don't, I don't know why we, I know you were looking for clarification.
That's all, yeah, it didn't have to be written as long as I, as long as we collectively know, we would, I'll say, I wouldn't bring somebody in. If I did, I would ask. In front of the council and talk to the town managers, hey, can I do this?
What do you think staying a town hall is?
If I wanted to have, talk to Clarkson Association and come here and, what are your gripes? Or what are your, what are your, yeah, just the location, that's all. It's just, yeah, that's all, like a Q and A. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of councils, mayors and councils have what they call office hours, where they may designate an hour a week where the doors are open, you come in. If you have a dispute or, you know, an issue in your ward that you'd like to address to your council member, you have the opportunity to do that. That is typically what I think of when I think of a town hall or, you know, and like you said, a lot of times you'll sit there and an hour later, you'll go home because nobody showed up. But yeah, it's a way that council members feel like they're giving the public the opportunity to interact with their elected official sort of, and bring any issues they may have to the forefront.
Does that need?
Thank you.
Council, and thank you for explaining what you meant, Councilman Jenkins. Does that require any type of approval from a fellow council member?
Really constituent services.
Yeah.
It's sort of what you're allowed to do.
I don't think we need this. If, if that is okay with the council, if you're agreeing with that, just to strike that.
Probably made it more harder than it had to be. It was just a clarification question on my part, that's all.
That's okay, good.
That's all.
All right.
Good to go.
Consensus moving forward on that one. Report to the mayor and council, order of business, I think we just discussed that.
Good.
So we're, we're, I think we're good with that.
Moving on to section one, as far as reporting attendance. Paragraph D, and this, section six one is new and is entirely, that's why the whole thing is highlighted. Members of the town council are expected to take the regular stations in council chambers for all regular meetings. That's copy pasted straight out of the town code, that's why it sounds like that. In order to ensure the town council can conduct town business effectively and efficiently, anticipated absences from a meeting should be reported as soon as possible or as at least 24 hours in advance to the presiding officer and town manager. And using presiding officer there allows for whoever is going to be in charge. Members of the town council who cannot attend a meeting in person but nonetheless wish to participate may do so in accordance with the section six eleven, participation attendance by remote electronic communication.
So this is just added as a point, just pulling it from the code point of clarification. So it just says, if you're not going to be here, can you give us heads up so we know whether we have a quorum or not?
Correct.
All right, Councilman Winkler, are you okay with this language? Councilor Chollinger?
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
It's good, good.
All right, good.
Easy ones in a row.
I know.
Six two, paragraph D, conflicts of interest shall be disclosed. I added, and members disclosing such conflicts of interest because it wasn't there before, and it didn't make, the sentence didn't make sense without it. Conflicts of interest cannot participate in anything.
Okay, just a clarification. Councilman Winkler, are you okay with this language?
Yes, does it preclude the council member who has the conflict from at least engaging in the discussion of whatever the matter is?
They would eliminate them from, if they have a conflict, then they should leave the dais.
Okay, okay.
Councilor Chollinger?
I'm okay with it.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward? And Councilman Jenkins?
I'm okay with that.
All right. And?
Section eight, two. Meetings with the public staff and the mayor, town council members. This had to do with reporting when town council members will be attending public events in their, in their official capacity, where I think is where the key words were. There was some question about when you need to ask council members, report when you will be at a public event. And mainly that was, again, with the quorum, we want to avoid the perception of any kind of underhanded dealings being made outside of, our town business being conducted outside of the Open Meetings Act.
And this is the same thing we have been doing for, for decades.
It is.
Reporting, okay, it's just putting the language in the policy.
And it was a process established by the previous town attorney to, just for the transparency sake.
Okay.
So just a question, so when we attend the bounty of the county, it's a public event and we are invited, and we all go and we sit at the table together, we've done that for the past couple of years. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what made, and I sent the question to the town manager to ask, what made it come up now? We've been attending these events as mayor and council, well, just as a town staff. So what happened?
I'm not sure, we've been doing the news releases for years, as long, as long as I've been here, so. I've been here, so.
The question of us prior to starting to talk about policy. And you stated that we were at an event and something happened with the commissioners and we were trying to abort it. What event were we all at?
Oh, oh, okay. So the one with the commissioners. That was a public event. I don't recall who was hosting it, but the county commissioners, and there were three of them there, discussing ongoing county business. A member of the audience, a member of the public, reported that they were conducting county business outside of the Open Meetings Act to the Open Meetings Act ombudsman. And they, they were required to admit to their fault. They were found guilty of it and had to admit to their fault in, in public, in an, in an open meeting. So the next time something came up, and I didn't call anybody out on purpose, but if you want to. So at the Martin Luther King Jr. breakfast, it was a public event and you, the mayor and Councilman Chollinger were all there. So that's a quorum. And it doesn't matter. I have no doubts that you did not discuss town business, but the perception of conducting town business outside of the Open Meetings Act is what we're trying to avoid with these notifications. That's all.
And we didn't all sit at the table together.
As far as anybody knows.
Yeah, and this is a very strict interpretation. It's probably good that the town does this, but I've worked in communities where I had three council members that went to church together. You know, the town didn't, you know, put a notice to the public that they may attend church services every Sunday. So, you know, it's like, as Director Phipps has said, it was, it's a very strict interpretation from our previous attorney that recommended to do this. And it's, it's not bad practice, but the, the main thing is, is that the council understands that if you do find yourself three shoulder to shoulder, that you do not discuss town business. That's the important, that's the intent of the law. And, you know, you're not going to be taking action on anything in a.
For the bounty of the county. I guess that's the part that I'm not understanding.
Because we do news releases for bounty of the county. Because we do news releases for the bounty of the county?
We do what?
News releases for the bounty of the county.
Yeah, it's posted on the website.
Through Civic Web.
When Michelle asks us if we want to attend these events and we say yes, that's not, so she's seeing who wants to go. So she's not posting those. You know, we were invited to attend the NAACP. We didn't do it individually and show up together. That was an invitation that came from the assistant town manager. Would you like to go? So here. We respond to her, yes, no, whatever. So when you get that response, could we not have made the announcement from that? That's what, that's, I guess I'm just not understanding because any public event we attend is by invitation and we respond to the town assistant town manager.
So what it sounds like to me, councilwoman, is I had no idea that an invitation had been received in town hall, is there is a disconnect between me and the assistant town manager on who's been invited to what.
So I could be to make reservations for you. We say yes, she has that attendance. So.
And I think the trigger is that if three members identify themselves as participating, then that's what triggers the notice from the clerk's office.
So then.
So if we only have two, for example, and three show up, then that's where the sort of, I don't want to call it a loophole, but that's where that happens. So, you know, it's, things happen and, you know, I don't think it was the intent of anyone to, you know, violate the Opens Meeting Act, which they didn't. But, you know, at the same time, the town is trying to be diligent in notifying the public that in the event, in certain circumstances, the council will be in the same place at a social event.
I understand the rationale. I'm just saying, all of these events that we attend, you know, we, we went to MML and we had dinner after MML.
Mm-hmm.
Was that announced? And that's what I'm just trying to get an understanding. We respond to invitations. I'm assuming she takes note of who said yes, because she makes the reservation.
Yes, many times she makes the reservation and that's why, in that way, it's all taken care of by one point. And like I said, if it's three, like right now, I'm not sure what we have going to Annapolis, if there will be three. A lot of times there's not. But you can say the same thing about the farmer's market. You know, three members of council could show up at the farmer's market. Sometimes you're going to find yourself in the same location. And it, yes, and again, the important thing is, or target, for example, you know, it's, is you're not conducting town business.
So accidental social encounters are covered by OMA. That's, that's totally clear. However, I won't necessarily see, and Michelle won't necessarily see, the invitations you get. Sometimes you have organizations that invite you directly and do not involve the town at all. In those cases, we wouldn't know if you were going to be there or not until we find out by surprise after.
And I know you have done a great job hosting bounty of the county and MML dinner and all of that. I think this was a one-off that two people had responded to. Michelle and I think one actually went and paid probably for himself and showed up. And I think that was the one-off on that one, because I know I receive the notifications all the time, council may attend. I think one just came up yesterday, council may attend an upcoming event. So it is just, this language was put in as a way of just making sure that if we are invited to an event, it's a member of town, either Michelle or Brent or Legislative Services knows, so they can post, may attend.
Yeah, and I think, I would like some clarification from the town attorney as far as official capacity versus whatever, because we wear two hats a lot of times, right? So traditionally, my law firm has been a sponsor of the MLK breakfast and, you know, I was at their, their Charles County, the, actually the state NAACP program that was here at CSM, and I was, I was a sponsor. You know, I, I had somebody ask me, are you here as town council or are you here as an attorney? Now, nobody else was there, right? And I said, well, a lot of people don't like lawyers, so I'm here as town council. It's a mad resident. I'm here as the attorney, right? But I, I think it would be helpful to get some guidance from Mr. Gallow on that for my purposes. But of course, I, you know, I've been going for years. I've, I hadn't seen you there before, so I didn't anticipate there'd be three of us. But I guess I, I should have let Michelle know, but I didn't even think of it, because I was going as attorney Matt, not town council man.
Which is precisely why we write something like this. And honestly, I, if, if two had RSVP, I would rather send out a news release and have only two show up than to have four show up by mistake and we hadn't said anything.
Sure.
Okay, so I hear that we need clarification from the town attorney. If that's the will of the council, we can not have a consensus to keep this in until we hear an opinion from the attorney. Are you okay with that, Councilman?
Sure, if it's, if it's necessary.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just need some guidance as to what official capacity is versus private capacity from Mr. Gallow. I, I don't have any problem with the way it's written. I just need a further breakdown.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, do you, are you okay with the language or would you want to hold off until?
Hold off.
Okay. And Councilman Jenkins, do you want to hold off until Florida?
We can. I'm, I'm fine with the way it's written.
So we will not, until we get further clarification on that. Brings us to 8.5.
8.5 includes letters of support as a type of official document issued by the town council. It's later defined under paragraph C of a letter of support. And again, all new text, so fully highlighted.
Any discussion on this from council? Councilman Winkler, are you okay with the language that has been added?
Yes, you know, I think anytime an organization's looking for a support from, from the town, the town, you know, fellow town residents or town organization, the only concern I have is somebody speaking on behalf of somebody that not, without consulting the fellow council members first, lest they speak out of turn.
I agree with that. And I think that's something that in the past has, there's been, this has been violated. I think this is good that it is in writing and moving forward. You get, if there's someone looking for a letter of support, it's not necessarily just from the mayor. It has to be from everyone. So with council, maybe a letter of support may be issued in response to requests with council approval or majority council or whatever that language is, so that that is, so that we're all on the same page with that. And I said, and I'll, I'll admit it, I have violated this before and haven't since when it was pointed out to me. And so I appreciate that being pointed out to me, but I do like the language that we're all on the same page. So none of us are speaking for all of us. Councilman Chollinger, are you okay with the clarification on letter of support?
I like the concept, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate your, your background as far as explaining that, why we have this here. I'd like some information from the town attorney as to how other municipalities are doing it, what's appropriate.
Okay. Councilman Bryant Ward? What is your, yeah, do you?
Yeah. Well, whatever we're going to put here, again, if it's not enforceable.
I, I think the past is the past and that.
You can say that.
And I have.
Don't get to dictate that. So as long as we can, you know, hold each other accountable, then fine.
Okay, you're okay with the language as it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Jenkins?
I'm okay as written.
Okay. So we do have a consensus, but we would, we'll have our attorney weigh in on that, just for that. So that language is acceptable?
Skipping backwards just a touch, in paragraph B, I removed the language about proclamations and when they're issued, because they could be issued at any meeting.
Are we all okay with striking that?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
And then skipping back forward to paragraphs D and E with the same additions to both of them, it would be signed. And here we'll remove reference to the mayor pro tem from both of them.
Okay.
And then in each signature block, it would indicate on behalf of the council, the town will play it down.
Question for you. When it's proclamations that will be all signatures?
They will.
And of course ordinances. When, when it's recognition, you know, for official citations and certificates, I know this has been brought up before. This may be the norm, but if somebody, if we are doing something for a program, this came up before, and it was just one signature, and it was brought up that it should be all of our signatures. I, I don't want to force us to be in just this one little box. I know that I do Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, all of that as recognition on that, even today for the, the recognition for 100 years. If that's, I know this is usually how it goes, except for proclamations that are, we are proclaiming a day that you'll have signatures. What is the will of the council for this? And I did not drive this at all on here. I, I didn't have any say on this. So Councilman Winkler? To get everyone's signature is difficult at best for certain things.
Yes, I, I would imagine that, you know, it could bring things to a snail's pace. Again, I, my only, I'm, I'm fine with the verbiage. I'm fine with somebody issuing an official citation or, or certificate of recognition. My only concern is when it, when somebody or a fellow council may have a, you know, we'll call it either an alternative viewpoint or does not officially support whatever the, for whatever reason, that, you know, you're asking somebody, you're, you're assigning somebody's name to something that they may or may not be. I, I would assume, just as a, as a, out of mutual respect for that, if we're going to issue an official citation or certificate of recognition, that at least the, the idea or, or the, the subject is at least discussed prior to, just, hey, this is what I would like to do, you know? I want to, I want to issue a proclamation acknowledging the King's Grand Home Owners Association for the great job in spreading mulch. I'm okay with that. You know, that, that's fine. But, but a little, hey, this is what we're doing. Are you okay with that? That would be, I, I would appreciate a little heads up.
That's a great point. Councilman Chollinger?
I think names at least, if not signatures, should be included. If it's on behalf of town council, it takes four lines to put the additional names on there. I, I know it's, it's interesting just because, and I haven't brought it up before, but when we go to events and we see county documents, it's very often that all of the county commissioners are listed. But for us, a lot of times, I'm not saying every time, but what I've noticed, town council's not. I don't, so, I mean, I think at least the names should be listed. I don't know that there's as much of a problem getting signatures. I don't think we're doing this five times a week. Usually you're very good about announcing new business openings and seeing if council's available. Usually that's at upcoming events and in our meetings. I don't think it would take an additional Herculean effort to get a signature, but I think signature is good from council. If, if that's not amenable for our council, I think at least the names should be on there.
Okay. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I think that it should be the council, because when I did a town hall and used a town seal, a big issue was raised stating that I was representing the town and I shouldn't have been able to use the seal, but our names are on the letterhead. But if you are the only one signing or making the decision to do, I mean, I didn't know anything about the Stevens 100 anniversary and, you know, it appeared on the agenda. And so that looks like it's coming from you on behalf of the town and you have, you don't have signature authority either. So to have your signature only, it's representing the town. So if it's going to be that none of us can represent the town by using letterhead or whatever, then it should not be for you either, because we're equal, one fifth of all of us.
Okay. Councilman Jenkins?
Two, I, I think the name should be there and I would, you know, kind of regranted it. Devils in detail, it would be nice to have a heads up. Again, just so you know what's coming.
So Director Phipps, what I'm hearing from the council is when we do have official citations or certificates of recognition, that all council members be informed? And if it is the will of the council, if we are not able to all sign them, are we okay with having digital signatures input on that? And is that something that you can do, Director Phipps?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that the will of the council is to, two steps? And this is why we do this. And I, and I think this, and I appreciate all the feedback. So is it the will of the council that we have, first of all, that we're informed of all? And, and Councilman Winkler, you put it nicely, is you may not always, you as, we may not always agree on something that we want to recognize. And do we have that option not to sign it? I mean, if it's something that we are, we disagree with.
I would never want to put any of my fellow council members in an awkward position.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I, I would, not for my own failure, not wanting to sign anything, but I would never assume, you know, and I'll use this as an example. I'm a big supporter of Ducks Unlimited, but I would never assume that the members of the council would support. So I would look at it as it would be apropos for me to assume that we're going to issue a town proclamation or. or citation to support an organization that so, somebody in the council may have reservations about supporting. So I think that's where that, where I was.
That's great. So Director Phipps, it's, it is, and I'll get a consensus to make sure, but to summarize it, it's step one, if we get a request for official citation or certificate of recognition is to inform all council members to make sure that they are in support of this. And number two, if we cannot get a wet signature, to use a digital signature on the forms before presenting. Is that, is summarized, okay, so. Councilwoman Bryant Ward? That's okay. All right. So that is clear enough? All right.
And in paragraph E, I just noticed it says proclamations again, and that should read certificates of recognition. So I'll correct that.
It's, it says.
Paragraph E, certificate of recognition. Towards E, and it says proclamations may be requested by, and obviously that should be certificates of recognition.
Good. All right. So only a couple of them that need to be tweaked. And so thank you very, I see, I knew you needed to sit down on that one. Thank you very much. And thank you, council, for a very good conversation on this. And hopefully we are getting a document that is closer to being adopted. All right. It brings us to our legislation and we have ordinance 24 dash 01, chapter 199 for a second reading and consideration of adoption. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, an ordinance concerning chapter 191, zoning ordinance for the town of La Plata, Maryland, for the purpose of amending the zoning ordinance to define development standards for the religious assembly use type and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 24 dash 01, chapter 191 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 24 dash 01, an ordinance concerning chapter 191 zoning ordinance for the town of La Plata, Maryland.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is resolution 24 dash 02, Blue Jay Court Stormwater Pipe Lining Project.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, resolution concerning Blue Jay Court Stormwater Pipe Lining Project for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for the installation of pipe lining in the stormwater infrastructure on Blue Jay Court and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 24 dash 02 as presented?
Madam Mayor, we'd make a motion to adopt resolution 24 dash 02, Blue Jay Court Stormwater Management Pipeline Project as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, please, oh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Brings us to our last one, resolution 24 dash 03.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, purchase of real property for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning purchase of real property for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to consummate the purchase of certain real estate for the use of town of La Plata and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 24 dash 03 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt resolution 24 dash 03 as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to new business, which is going to be changed shortly, but commission reports. First of all, we do have two appointments that need to, if it's the will of the council, be reapport, reappointed for the Board of Appeals. It's Hugh Williams and Jonathan Burris. It will be for three-year terms. Their terms just expired. And I would like to make a motion that we renew the Board of Appeals appointments for Hugh Williams and Jonathan Burris for the duration of three years. Do I have a second?
Do I, do I need to excuse myself? Hugh Williams is an employee of mine. Is that a conflict? Should be conflict, right?
Yeah, I would think so.
All right. So I might hop off the.
All right. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I second your motion.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying, oh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Motion carries. Well, come on back. Commission report. We will start with Councilman Winkler.
Well, I am happy to report my first commission report. I apologize. This is actually from January 19th. I was not able to attend the January 23rd meeting to, to issue, but just from the Historic Preservation Committee meeting, just a couple of things regarding the train museum, that some repairs are on schedule, just to allow, let the town, the council know. There's also looking to address some, the need for some repainting when the weather, repainting of the train museum when the weather improves, along with some additional landscaping to make it a little more inviting. It's obviously a, a, a great asset to our walking downtown initiative. In addition, the firehouse, we're trying to look to increase some additional awareness and utilization for the, the La Plata Firehouse. And lastly, we did a field trip to visit the old jail where a plaque is going to be erected on the old jail, which was also the old library. And we've established the, the wherewithal of where that's going to go on the, what is currently being utilized by the state's attorney. There's a couple of things that are coming up in the accounts or the committee have decided to meet every other month instead of quarterly because of some initiatives that are, are coming forth in the next couple of years or leading up to 2026 with the 125th anniversaries of the respective tornadoes. My first meeting with the Design Review Board is tomorrow, so I can report back on that next week.
Good luck. You'll have fun. Thank you very much. Councilman Challenger?
No report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
No report.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. I, two, two meetings to report about. The La Plata Town Center Corporation Board met via Teams meeting on February 6th, and I provided a brief summary of those meeting notes to each council member. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from that. And then the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting is tomorrow morning at 7:30 on a Teams meeting and we'll be discussing Will's Park, the amphitheater, and be getting some additional updated information from Direct Stall with respect to the Lake Tillman Project and some other updated information about Parks and Recs. And thanks to Councilman Bryant Ward, received a message from her through constituent about an issue of parks maintenance. So we'll be talking probably about that as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And Happy Fat Tuesday. Tomorrow is start of, for those that practice Lent, it's start of Lent, but it is also Valentine's Day. So Happy Valentine's Day to those who celebrate. Yesterday, the Maryland Municipal League President and the CEO and many members of the staff came down to do a quick tour of La Plata. Councilwoman Bryant Ward was there and Director Phipps helped with a quick two-hour lunch and highlight tour of La Plata. So that was, they had a very good time on that one. Last week I was able to go to the, up to MML to interact with members from the Japanese delegation. And it was fascinating to find out what problems their government faces on a local level and compare it to ours as well. So that was, that was about an hour meeting up there. I know Captain Payne and I had the great honor and privilege of going to Night to Shine last Friday, the prom that is, that highlights, that is the highlight of the year for those living with disabilities. Oh my goodness, it is magical night. I encourage everybody, if you are able to volunteer next year, it's usually the second Friday of February. It, it is life-changing for sure. We did have, Councilwoman Bryant Ward and I joined several members of the police department, including the chief on our polar bear plunge. That water was a little chilly, but another great opportunity. They, this year, as of 5 o'clock today, $4.236 million has been raised this year for the polar bear plunge for 15,588 athletes in Maryland, and this has been going on for 28 years. And the police department, ours raised almost, our, our police, the chief's police department raised almost $2,000. But overall, police departments in Maryland, this, this polar bear plunge raised in excess of $375,000, all going towards the Special Olympics. And that, oh, and then coming up in the next, on Friday, and then next week, I will be visiting elementary schools and as part of the program, if I were mayor. So I get to talk to these great fourth graders about what mayor and council do for the town, how our government works, and it's always so fun. And their questions are are incredible and what they would do if they were mayor is a lot of fun. So with that, that is my report. And thank you for that. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. We do have a reason, three reasons to go into closed session. So I will entertain a motion for each one separately, and we will have to do a roll call to see if you are okay to go into closed session. So I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for the first one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to statutory authority to close sessions subsection 3 dash 305 B7 to consult with council to obtain legal divide, legal advice, topic stage coach crossing.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you are in favor of going into closed session for stage coach crossing, please indicate with yea, if not nay. Councilman Winkler?
Yea.
Councilman Challenger?
Yea.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yea.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yea.
And I am a yea as well. Our next motion for closed session, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Alpassa Magnolia Gardens.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to statutory authority to close sessions subsection 3 dash 305 B7 to consult with council to obtain legal advice, topic Alpassa and Magnolia Gardens.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you are in favor of going to closed session for this topic, please indicate by saying yea, if not nay. Councilman Winkler?
Yea.
Councilman Challenger?
Yea.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yea.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yea.
Mayor James is a yea. And our third reason for going into closed session today, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to statutory authority, statutory authority to close sessions subsection 3 dash 305 B14 to discuss before a contract is awarded or bids are open, a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the content of a bid or proposal. If public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process, topic water appropriations.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. If you are in favor of going into closed session for this topic of water appropriations, please indicate by saying yea. If not, please indicate by saying nay. Councilman Winkler?
Yea.
Council, Councilman Challenger?
Yea.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yea.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yea.
And Mayor James is a yea as well. Thank you very much for a very robust meeting today. I move to adjourn at 8:04 this evening. Thank you very much and have a great night. All right. We're going into closed session. You guys need a five-minute break? Go.
Yeah, good.